Welcome to our November work session. We're going to go ahead and get started. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Laduff for some recognitions.
Yes, sir. Good evening, board members. Just want to tell everybody, I'll start with Happy Thanksgiving. We've got a well-earned week off for our teachers and students coming up here soon after we close out the week strong. But since the last time we went, very proud of a couple of things that have happened in the system. Winder Bear football competed in the state playoffs. Sims Academy took their engineering students to tour the Olympic Steel Fabrication in Beaufort. Austin Road Elementary teacher Andrea Rowe, esteemed teacher there, was named the Farm Bureau District Four Teacher of the Year. Our school nutrition department earned the Golden Radish Award, and that is for outstanding achievement in promoting farm-to-school initiatives in our system. So very proud of the work that's been going on and looking forward to a whole lot more of it as we close out the semester.
That's exciting. Alrighty, next, I'd like to welcome up Dr. Bowen with Support Services.
Good evening. I want to start with a big shout out to two of our members, of our leaders in our departments for pitching in when needed. And that is Dr. Al Darby has been spending a lot of his time at Chi East and Appalachian High School the last two months, and I appreciate him greatly for doing that. And also want to acknowledge Lance McNamara, who is actually filling in in the statum nurses in the clinic the last few days. Feet on the ground, boots on the ground Lance. So getting a great perspective there that I know will make us better and appreciate him filling in there. So those two guys are vital to our success. I wanted to come to you tonight with a summary of the Mental Health Services' response since the Appalachian shooting. And the document that you see there are things that, the highlighted items are things that are specifically been offered to Appalachia. I know there's been some discussion about what are we doing different and what are we doing unique? And what are we tailoring to the needs of Appalachian staff? So we assembled this timeline and these documents to show that, starting very early on with the reimbursement out of pocket, mental health service expenses. We also, just moving through the list, we had Dr. Schoenfeld, the national expert that came and spent time directly with Appalachia a couple of different times. You see his name on here with Appalachia. On the 10th and 11th, he came back to our system again in October. The EMDR, Eye Movement Desensitization and Reprocessing, is something you see on here quite a bit. Apparently that is a therapy that activates a part of the brain that helps us in dealing with trauma. It's shown to be very effective, and I would love to be able to explain it to you, but I don't have time. So anyway, I'm told it's doing, it is serving a great purpose there. We appreciate those therapists. We are also starting to, we did enact pretty early on in September there for all employees, to be able to seek out mental health services in need without using their sick leave that started out at 60 minutes a week for everyone. We did a phased-in return, obviously, for Appalachia. We have added some additional staff, additional substitutes. Got access to the Georgia Crime Victims Compensation Fund for lost wages and for other benefits there. And as we move on through the EAP, Employee Assistance Program, is providing a therapist assigned specifically to Appalachia. We got the Calm app for free for Appalachian staff. We had a trauma psychologist visit from South Carolina on November 4th and 5th, worked directly with our staff. Those two days were staff-only days, if you remember. We also, staff, it changed to seeking mental health services without using sick leave was raised to 90 minutes a week there for everyone, including everyone in Appalachia too. But, and then we had another trauma psychologist out November 20th, 22nd. Two additional therapists are being assigned, hired separately and assigned to Appalachia. And finally, we have a therapy dog coming for Appalachia that'll be picked up over Thanksgiving break, and her name is Bo. And I look forward to bringing you pictures of Bo, and hopefully you'll get a chance to get out by Appalachia sometime on the 5th or after and visit with the Wildcats' therapy dog named Bo. Any questions or comments for this segment? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alrighty, next, I'd like to welcome up Ms. Houston with Business Services.
Ms. Houston doesn't have a report tonight. She's out.
Alrighty, we will move on to Mr. Purna with System Operations.
Good evening. I'd like to give you an update on our projects. Our Performing Arts Center is coming along well. As you can see there, we've got a good bit going on outside with the tennis court surfacing. Also at the courtyard there that leads back up toward the upper part of the campus at the back of the Performing Arts Center. That's coming together as well. The curtain wall there, the glass is being installed at that location. And at the playfield, we've got the lights, the light poles on site and work underway on the concession and press box building. That's another look at the courtyard there. Get inside there, a lot of work going on inside as well. The last concrete pore done on the sloped floor there in the auditorium. And we got that last section of wall put in place, so we're completely closed in there now. Ceiling grid installation is underway, so doing well there and moving right along. For our classroom pods. At Appalachian High School, we've got the first pod unit there in place along the bus loop. And the trades are starting to work inside with the casework that you see there. Plumbing, the sprinkler pipe, and then site work going on at the back of the school where the second pod will be located. And I believe all those units are on site now for that second pod. They'll begin to put those together. And as the trades come out of that first pod, they'll move on to the second one and start to finish out the inside of that once it's all put together. So they're making good progress as well. Any questions? Thank you. We have one action item tonight, and I'm going to ask Greg Webb to speak on that.
Good evening. The Maintenance Department is adding two new technicians for growth per the BCS fiscal year '25 general funds budget. Each technician position requires a work vehicle to accomplish their assigned task. During budget planning and approval, funds were allotted for two new vehicles to accommodate each of the new technicians. With commercial work vehicles being in high demand with very limited actual onsite availability for both new and used vehicles, we've come to find that used vehicles are extremely high-priced relative to the cost of a new vehicle and the mileage that would come with a used vehicle. So we feel the best type of purchase for the intended use of these vehicles would be new. We've searched local dealers to determine available inventory of suitable vehicles for our use. Two box vans appropriate for Maintenance Department needs were located at Akins Ford. Maintenance has identified comparable pricing from other dealers located throughout the U.S. The comparable prices indicate that Akins is offering a fair price for purchase to Barrow County schools. The cost is within the remaining Maintenance FY '25 approved vehicle budget, which is $126,503. At the bottom of the page, you'll see comparable costs for vehicles suiting our needs, which we found one in Tennessee and one in New Jersey. So in summary, the Maintenance Department is requesting board approval to negotiate final pricing with Akins Ford for the immediate purchase of two new vehicles with the already-approved fiscal year '25 budget amount of $126,503. And this approval would waive the requirement of an RFP for purchases over $75,000, allowing us to work directly with the dealership. So the superintendent recommends the purchase of new maintenance vehicles at a cost not to exceed $126,503 from the fiscal year '25 general fund budget.
Any questions? With the high demand, we'll vote on this tonight, so you guys can get real.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Alrighty, next, I'd like to invite up Dr. Moten with Teaching and Learning.
Good evening. The Teaching and Learning Report has one item of information and no action items this evening. Of our student enrollment, approximately 2,553 students are students who have individualized education plans or students with disabilities. And thank you for your support in all of the ways that you have supported these students because sometimes their education goes beyond and their needs go beyond what is required of a regular education student. So thank you for your support. I'm fortunate to have a very strong department of colleagues who support these students, and they are led by Ms. Amy Wadley. And that team is going to present to us this evening on bold and bright futures, celebrating progress, initiatives, and impact in special education. So we are fortunate to have them explain to us how we go above and beyond to support these students who have very special and unique needs. Welcome.
Thank you for that introduction, and we really appreciate all of you welcoming us here today so that we can talk about all the positive things that are happening in Barrow County for our students who have exceptional needs. So as Dr. Moten mentioned, Barrow County has a pretty significant chunk of students who are served, and they require specialized services in order to have access to the curriculum. And to anchor that stat for you a little bit, I wanted to bring some national data to the table. So if you look at the second bullet point under Statistics, it shows that the national average for a percentage of students with disabilities in a school system is actually 15%, and that range is anywhere from 12% to 21%. So with Barrow County being at 16.5, I would say it's right there in the middle. But what I also want to note is that that statistic was all I could find, and it was from 2023. But all the literature that I've been reading says that these numbers are steadily growing since COVID. So just wanted to throw that little tidbit out there. Perhaps that might be why we're a little higher than that national average. But in Barrow County, our goal is to provide a full continuum of services to our students and provide a variety of programs for them to meet the needs of every exceptional student. No child is alike. We were just talking today about how every case is different. Just when you think you know what to do, you know, something else comes up, and you have to really think outside of the box to serve our students. And so regardless of their challenges, what we want to do is provide them with the tools, resources, and opportunities to grow and to thrive and become the very best version of themselves. That's our goal. And so at the second part of that slide, what you'll see is just a list of the service programs that we have here in Barrow County. So we have the PREP program, and Ms. Amy Do is going to talk about that to you in just a moment. We have our Base A and Base G programs, and those are very specialized programs for students who are eligible in the category of autism, and they need something more than what they could get in a general setting. And so this is more structured to meet their needs. Then we have our RISE class, which is essentially a behavior support class, and that is also very highly structured, and it is supporting students in the area of growth with social skills and self-advocacy in all the right ways. Then we have the Lighthouse, which is our program that, remember when we had that at Rutland Academy, and we talked about how we were bringing it here to our school system? So we call it the Lighthouse, and it's very similar to the RISE program. However, it's got a therapeutic component to it, which is really special. Those students are receiving therapy at least one time a week in a variety of ways, whether it's whole group therapy, music therapy, so on and so forth. After that, we have our PACE classes. It's PACE 1 through 3. That's for our students with significant cognitive impairments. And the 1 through 3 just denotes the level of support that they need, with 3 being the most supportive environment for them. The Regional DHH program is something that our whole 13-county RISA area, we all have that at our fingertips for our students who are deaf and hard of hearing that require extremely explicit specialized instruction that includes American Sign Language, and they have interpreters. It's a wonderful program. We definitely have many students who take advantage of that opportunity. And then for students who don't need quite that much, but they have visual impairments or hearing impairments, we have itinerant teachers from our Shared Services Program at RISA who send those teachers to Barrow County essentially to work with them on a regular basis to help them meet their IEP goals. So from here, I'm going to let the coordinators take it away and talk to you about a little bit more.
So I'm Amy Do, and I have the pleasure of coordinating our PREP program. This is for our students ages 3 through 5 that have identified disabilities. We identify them through a comprehensive developmental evaluation, and our instruction is structured from a developmental perspective. So I was the SLP for the preschool program for many years. In 2016, I stepped into this role. In 2016, we evaluated 111 students. Last school year, we evaluated 171 with a 93% qualifying rate. Quite a bit of growth. You can also see the classroom growth. We had three classrooms in 2016. We now have eight spread out in eight of our elementary schools. Each classroom has a teacher and a peer pro, and we also serve students in the community, so we have a community-based peer pro. We currently have 126 students, but that will change as of tomorrow. We're always adding. We have a play-based curriculum that we use, and all of the staff has recently been trained on. It is called Meta Play, and it truly is play-based because that's how these children are learning, is through play. As far as collaborations, we started a parent newsletter because we have to have a great collaboration with our parents to make this work. We have monthly PREP team meetings. We work with Babies Can't Wait, which is the Early Intervention Program for the State of Georgia for children birth to 3. We also have connections in the community with Head Start, private church preschools, doctors' offices. I recently held a Don't Delay Refer Today program to make sure we're not missing any children, and I had all of the community directors come in and talked about what constitutes a good referral and how we can support them. And I laugh at this because we are required to have an annual Child Find Screening Day, but in reality, we find children every day. So, but we do advertise it and make it official, but the phone rings every day. So that's preschool, and you can see our precious babies.
Hey, I'm Jill Rodbaugh. I'm the lead SLP, and I'm Special Ed Coordinator for the Appalachian Cluster Elementary and Middle Schools. So for the purposes of this, I'm just going to talk about speech. So this just tells a little bit about how many SLPs we have. We have 24 and a half. We have been growing exponentially there too with the needs of our students. We're trying to keep most of them at the elementary level and trying to get them in there, get them served as much as we can, and hopefully get them out if we can by middle and high school. Our focus with our team is professional learning, collaboration, and AAC initiative and recruitment and retention because for a while, we were having a lot of turnover for speech, and we just feel strongly that the more continuity we can have in service providers, the more growth that these students can make. So first for professional learning, we had Dr. Krim from UGA. She is a doctor of speech-language pathology, but she specializes in dyslexia. So with the Dyslexia Collaborative coming out and all of those new rules, we had her come out and do a professional learning session for our SLPs, which I think was greatly needed because depending on the age of the SLP depends on what they know about dyslexia. Our newer ones are all up to date with like the new research. The older ones, maybe like myself and some others, they, it was very telling to see what they knew, the differences in what they knew between the two. And she also came out and her team helped to do dyslexia and communication screenings at Bramble. We also collaborated with Dr. Santis at UGA for professional learning on fluency and voice. And then I think the biggest thing we're doing now is our AAC initiative. And AAC just means Augmentative and Alternative Communication. And that just means all ways that we can communicate other than words, whether it's gestures, sign, speech-generating devices. So some parents are hesitant on the speech-generating devices. That's kind of when you see a kid, they have an iPad and they press a button and it speaks for them. Sometimes parents are apprehensive because they think, oh, they're going to rely on that and they're not going to speak, but the research actually shows the other way, that it helps verbal communication. So we have training every year on AAC in a different way. We did one last week through a company called AbleNet. And so far, we've equipped 45 classrooms and nine SLPs with a dedicated communication device that they can use in their classroom. And then our efforts on recruitment and retention, we're making a flyer every year. This was obviously last year's flyer because he's not our speech therapist anymore, unfortunately. But he's last year's flyer. So we do monthly meetings with the speech therapist on professional learning, and those, we also do case analysis. People will bring, you know, difficult cases they have, and we discuss those. We develop resources, and we do needs assessments, and this allows the SLPs to collaborate with other SLPs in our district, especially the ones at the high school and middle school because they're by themselves most of the time. So it gives them the opportunity to collaborate, and sometimes we do have people from other districts join us as well.
Hey, everybody. My name is Megan Farmer, and I am the Wynder Barrow Cluster Elementary and Middle School Coordinator. It's good to see you guys. I'm excited to talk about our initiatives. We really strive to provide programs and resources to our students who go through our program. So the first one is the Sunday System Reading Program. And it's a multisensory approach based on Orton and Gillinkan practices, and it's provided in our elementary and middle school levels, and we focus on reading. Seventy teachers are trained in this program, and all of our trainings have been held this year. We also have the Unique Learning System, and it truly is unique to our students that have adapted needs. Teachers are provided trainings three times per year, and it is specific to those adapted classrooms. So all of those teachers have access to that program. Assistive technology is a big emphasis in Barrow. We really want students to be equipped with the tools they need to access math and language arts programs and activities online. Equatio is specific to math, and Read and Write is specific to language arts. And our team definitely recognizes the importance of teaching social skills. I think you guys can all agree with that. We have purchased Core Project, Zones of Regulation, and Teach Town, and those programs are implemented across various settings to meet different behavioral needs. Comprehensive Behavior Change is also a company that we're excited to partner with. They come out and they provide support in our base classes. They also look at behavioral intervention plans, and they help provide classrooms with strategies that meet individual students' needs and overall classroom functioning. So that's been really beneficial and helpful this year. And then de-escalation programs. So we really want to focus on de-escalating a child, building relationships, making connections. And the specific programs we use are mindset, and then the Marcus Center Crisis Prevention Program.
Hi, good evening. I'm Katie Fenroyan. I'm the High School and Transition Coordinator. A big part of high school, but also, you know, growing throughout all, starting even with our PREP students, is to focus on transition because they're always transitioning from one level to the next. But getting to the high school level, we have some really great transition programs that are specific to Barrow, but also when we partner with our GVRA agency, our Georgia Vocational Rehabilitation Agency. So part of that transition, our two big goals that we have for that is having all students have access or have their planning, their parent permission forms complete through GVRA by 11th grade, but also have everybody paired with, all of our special education students paired with a specific transition program. So again, we have specific ones to Barrow that are Project Search. These are our school-to-work programs. Project Search, STEP, and YES, which STEP and YES are at Sims Academy. And then Project Search currently is partly between County Line Elementary and the local hospital. So we're excited. We just got to start at the hospital this year, so it's a new venture for us. So we're starting with only two students there right now, but we're going to grow. But also throughout, just as we know, all of our special education students have a wide variety of needs, whether that be all the way to needing that full support with supported employment or going even the other end, going into colleges. So GVRA is somebody that, an agency that we work with a lot to provide different programs and services through PRIETS, which is Pre-Employment Transition Services, whereas we have our outside agency come and work with students in the classroom. High School High Tech, which could be even taking field trips into the community, going to really great places nearby, even like Caterpillar. They take students who are interested in going into the workforce. We have them come and provide certification trainings to our students in the building. We also have access to Pathful Explorer, which is an online platform for career and college readiness. So again, it's just very important that we, especially at the high school level, we're really looking at that transition of what are the next steps and how can we provide what those individual students need as they move on to graduation. We also have this new timeline that we're working with that is kind of a planning form for families. So looking at from the very beginning, what should parents, families, guardians be looking at for their students? You know, each level does a checklist, what should they be looking at? So I'm very excited that we get to start with this, kind of rolling this out now. And again, helping these families to know what is, because we often get, what do we do? What do we know at this point? Well, at this point, these are the things that we should be focusing on. A big thing that I am so, so excited about this year is our Transition Fair, which is going to be coming up in March, and that is our Transition Flyer. We have not had a special education transition fair in a while. I know COVID kind of made some things a little more difficult, so we're really excited to have that back this year. So right now, we have 12 confirmed vendors, but we're still adding people all the time for that. And a big, exciting part of this is one of our STEP students, which is one of our transition programs at Sims Academy, created this flyer with an eye gaze program. So I'm happy to show that off to everybody.
Assistive technology.
Yes, assistive technology.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Smith, and I'm the parent mentor for the Special Education Department. I haven't been here very long, but my goal within the first six months of taking this position was to create an opportunity for our parents to collaborate with their teachers, their children's teachers. In doing that, I have started a monthly newsletter that goes out every month to every special education parent in the county. And one thing that's been great about that is we have been able to highlight some of our special education staff. So a lot of our parents can put a face with the name because a lot of times they don't know them. Especially after COVID, things kind of changed with parents coming into the schools. We're also including upcoming dates for the board as far as like the Boulder meetings, different trainings. Emory University provides a lot of autism training free of charge to our parents, so I want to make sure that they have access to that. And I also am a big proponent in making sure that our special education students are receiving the services they need regardless of their income and regardless of what their parents can provide. So I'm really working very hard right now on making sure that if our special education students aren't qualifying for Medicaid, we're able to get them the support that they need financially. I've also taken over the Facebook group for the Barrow County Special Education Parent Connection right now. As of today, we had, that says 356. We actually have about 370 now. And it's a message board specifically for our special education community. And what's been so great about this is it's another opportunity to share upcoming events and things like that within the county, but it's been a place for these parents to kind of speak to each other. They've learned that a lot of their experiences are the same, a lot of the challenges that they face and the successes that they experience are the same. So it's great to be able to have a community where they feel welcome and safe. And we, I have some upcoming things that are coming. Again, Katie talked about the Transition Fair. We're very excited about that. But we also are working on with, dealing with the schools and creating a family support services kind of function where we are able to have different representatives from each school talk about the financial services that are available to them and what that adapted curriculum looks like and what each level of the classroom in our Special Education Department is and what that means. I'm also in the process of creating a PowerPoint specifically for Medicaid, Katie Beckett, and a now comp waiver for our transition students. And I want to present that to our parents eventually after the first of the year because it is overwhelming and it's a long, hard process that requires a lot of documentation, and it is, and it's hard. So creating that as an opportunity for them to kind of get the financial support that they need is coming. And for those that are not going to be unable to attend because of work or whatever, I am going to make that presentation available to them whenever they need it. So thank you very much for having us up here tonight.
Great. Thank you to our coordinators and to our parent mentor for coming here and telling you a little bit about what we do. And they're really just scratching the surface. There's so many other things, but we thought, how do we cram it all in? We're just hitting the highlights. So going to this final slide, one thing I want to do as we're wrapping this up, I want to bring your attention to the center.
to bring your attention to the center photo, which shows you our most recent graduation data and for our students with disabilities. And, you know, you will look at that and see that there is a small dip there. In 2021, it was 83.49. Then it went down, then it went back up a little bit. But what I want to assure everybody of is that this data is actually trending upward. What I didn't include in here is our data from 2017 and 2021 because I read something that said it was calculated differently, and so I didn't want to skew anything. But when I look in the director portal for the DOE, and it, and it shows me our graduation rates for students with disabilities, from 2017 to 2021, the average rate was 69%. And the lowest was 59.85, up to 75%. So if you could imagine this on a line, you would see that we really and truly are trending upward. And I'm just very excited about what this team is doing and how we're collaborating with our administrators and all of our teams in schools to see this rate steadily climb. And graduation is a huge milestone. It's so important to all of us, and it's a huge focus. But I also want to shine a light on how we support the whole child in Barrow County. So one, I feel, really good example of this is after the tragedy at Appalachia High School, we decided that we wanted to do something a little bit different. We wanted to make sure that there was no student that might fall through the cracks. And so the district team decided that we were going to do a one-to-one check-in with every student with a disability at Appalachia High School. We would go there and camp out for a week. Thank you, Ms. Rayburg. And we just went in there and did our best. And as we started working through it, our process started to really become a well-oiled machine. But what we were able to do was meet with 226 students, one-to-one, to just get our eyes on them, to talk to them, and make sure that they were okay and that they could identify their helpers. You know, who could they go to in school if they needed help? Who could they go to at home? And it also allowed us to collect data on every student and be able to share that with Ms. Rayburg and her team and with Dr. Lowe and her team so that they could know if there were some students that we were more worried about and we thought they would need some follow-up. And it was just a way to kind of help us help them, make sure that we're looking at every single student and that we're ensuring that our students with disabilities have a little extra support if that's needed. But in addition to things like that, we celebrate the talents and the determination and achievements of our students through other programs like our Yes I Can Awards and Special Olympics, which those are all deep in the planning phases right now. But our approach to student success is about preparing them for graduation, and it's also about preparing them for what's to come after that, which is the rest of their life. So that takes a lot of thinking and putting a lot of things in place. So I feel like programs such as our STEP program and Project Search and other things that we do, which by the way, other districts want to replicate. We've had phone calls, people have come in and said, how did you start STEP? What do you do with Project Search? And we invite them in. So I think that's something that we can be proud of. But we remain dedicated to empowering our students and making sure that they have all the tools that they need to graduate, but also succeed beyond, and that we are going to help them meet their unique and full potential. So thank you to every single person here for all the support that you've provided to help us educate and celebrate and support our students. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Mr. Sherman, if I might.
Yes, sir.
Y'all probably know this, but I feel like I need to say it. Y'all are the reason all families moved to Barrow County.
Yep.
They come because y'all do such a great job for these students. And I've heard from many people, so build it and they will come.
Thank you. And I hope that's why we're at 16.5% because they're moving here.
Thank y'all very much.
And that's what it's about. Yeah.
And just to echo what Mr. Bailey said, just off of your presentations, we can tell that you guys pour your heart and soul into what you do. We appreciate you, and I know the parents and students greatly appreciate you. So thank, thank you again.
Thank you.
And I want to make a comment. I ran, since I've been at the hospital for a month, I ran into a parent with an autistic child, and I asked her if she was in Barrow and if not, because it's not school age yet, that she needs to look into our program because we have people looking to move here because of our program, so.
Grow in day by day. All right, thank you so much. All righty, next, I'd like to welcome up Dr. Kurtz with Human Resources.
All right. Well, thank you. We've heard from Dr. Bowen on some of the things we're doing to try to provide support for Appalachia staff in the wake of the tragedy there at Appalachia in September. And, you know, we recently rolled out the 90-minute additional leave plan to provide the opportunity for staff there to attend therapy sessions during a regular workday with, without having to use sick leave for that. And we tried to write that plan so that it had a minimum impact on student learning, so it happens during planning or other non-instructional times. We've got some feedback, some significant feedback from the staff there that indicated that longer periods of leave might also be helpful in the healing process. And so based on that feedback and in consultation with Ms. Rayburg, we revised a calendar for Appalachia High School to include five workdays that would normally be workdays that now, during which the staff would not be required to report to school. To, again, continue to make sure that we're minimizing the negative impact on our student learning, you know, we've already lost a number of days for those kiddos, want to have as much regularity there as we can, we have these scheduled on days that there is not direct face-to-face instruction. So four of them are on planning days, January 2nd, January 5th, March, or excuse me, February 17th, and May 23rd. And one of them is on asynchronous digital learning day, the March 17th. Thank you. So during these days, staff would not be required to report to the school so that it would provide that flexibility for some self-care and some other things that staff might need. I've got the 190-day calendar displayed because that's where the large majority of staff is there, but I'll reflect these changes on all of the calendars. And based on that feedback and based on this development, we'd like to ask the board to add this revised work calendar for Appalachia High School staff to the consent agenda for the regular board meeting on December 3rd.
Any questions? Consent? All right, thank you so much. All right. And last but not least, I'd like to welcome up Dr. Thompson with Strategic Information Services.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be in for you as always. We have this evening four items of information and one action item. The two, first two items of information, I'll take very quickly. We have posted for your review the communication report for October, and we have the 60-day enrollment count. Some months depending, we may dig into the communication report or the enrollment report a little more and highlight some areas. Tonight, we're not going to do that, but we do want to make sure that you're aware they are up for your, your review, excuse me. The third item of information we want to go through is an update on the process for timeline and feedback for measures of new safety measures that we are exploring. I want to revisit that timeline briefly. So Rochelle, if you'll go to the third slide. We brought this to you on October 1st. If you go to the last slide, please. There we go. So as we mentioned, the first time we talked about this, we are constantly in the process of researching various enhancements that we might add to the layers of safety that we provide students. We increased this in earnest in the wake of September 4th. And we outlined for the board at that time a process that we wanted to take to engage the entire community in looking at various safety enhancements. You know, as we've mentioned at the time, when we studied what had happened to districts that had undergone tragedies like this, very frequently, they made very quick decisions that were not sustainable in the long run and ended up walking those back within a year or two years of there because they didn't take the time to engage all of their community and their stakeholders, evaluate whether these enhancements were actually effective in increasing student safety or whether they were just things that sounded like a good idea at the time. And we wanted to make sure that we did not fall into that, so we wanted to take a deliberate process. We outlined that in October, we'd be using our school governance teams. And as a reminder, for our school, our school governance teams consist of the principal of the school. They also consist of teacher representatives, parent representatives, community representatives, and in the case of high schools, they include students. So what we asked them to do in October is we provided them with a lot of information, and we tried as hard as we could be to be as balanced as we could. We wanted to take everything that had been proposed or that we were looking at under consideration and say, here are the things that are positives. Here's the things that work, that are effective. Here's the things that are drawbacks. Here's the things that are trade-offs. Here's the things that are challenges. And we wanted them to be able to give us feedback with an open mind, not feeling as if we tried to tip the scales in either direction. We just wanted to give them the evidence as we had it. We asked them to look at several different potential enhancements, and I'll kind of read off the list of those. But we also said, you know, if there's other ideas that you have, we want to hear those as well. We looked at weapons detection systems and metal detectors, clear backpacks or no backpack policies, increasing mental health supports, increasing school resource officers, better inter-agency agreements and data sharing between school districts, so when students transfer, information flows quickly and effectively, arming staff, use of ID badges, increased threat assessment training, and increased overall training. And those were kind of the list of things we asked them to go through in this process. So they have completed that process in October. And I'm going to walk through briefly how, because these are public meetings, and we don't want anyone to think that we're trying to hide anything. We want to be as transparent as we can be. So Rochelle's going to show you where this feedback can be viewed. SGT meetings are much like board meetings. We don't post the minutes of the board meeting until the meeting that comes after it. So the October board meeting's minutes are posted in November. Works exactly the same way for an SGT. So if you go to the November, any November SGT meeting, when a school has those, they will have their minutes posted from the prior meeting, and you can find that in Symbiote and Eboard. And you'll be able to find the minutes from that meeting, where a summary of everything that was discussed. But because this is a document they produced for our benefit to help us give feedback of things that they were warm to or cool to in terms of, as a potential enhancement, once they've updated the minutes for the November meeting, they will go back to those October meetings and post the feedback document that they, they use as an SGT. So that will be available to the public to see how every school gave us feedback on these. And I will say at the outset, not every school agreed on every point, which is natural and understandable. There were some areas of things we asked them to look at where they had overwhelmingly positive and warm feedback. This was something they thought would be a strong enhancement for our safety protocols. There were some they were cool to. There were some they were mixed to. There were disagreements among levels. So we're trying to pull all that together. I can tell you in terms of the things that overwhelmingly came out that SGTs across the board were overwhelmingly positive about, one of them was increasing mental health supports in schools. One of them was increasing SROs in schools. One was increasing training on staff in terms of threat assessments or just general training. And the latter one was increasing inter-agency agreement across, across different school districts and across municipalities, law enforcement, things like that. That's not something we can do as a school district. That actually requires the state of Georgia to get involved. And I can tell you that is a priority in conversations with our legislative delegation. That is something the state will be looking at in earnest this session. So we're optimistic that may be an area where some good progress can be made. So the SGT feedback will be posted as those teams meet in November for the public to review. What I can say is the next step is that on December 2nd, we will be sending surveys out to every parent of a student in Barrow County, the high school students, and every staff member in Barrow County. We want the survey to be as objective as we can be, so much like with the SGTs, we'll try to provide for each of these the information that we have in terms of things that are effective about them, things that are ineffective, things that are positive, things that we may see as trade-offs or drawbacks, and try to be balanced in this. And then we're going to ask them to give us their feedback in terms of which of these they think are the right fit for Barrow County. That will run from December 2nd to December 13th, so there'll be two weeks for, for that to be taken. Once we've pulled all that together, we've looked at our SGTs. We also, I forgot to mention, did with our Teacher Advisory Council and our Teachers of the Year, we did a focus group as well to get their feedback on the same questions we asked our school governance teams. So we think this is a process by which when we finish, we'll have a very good sense of what the community is invested in. We'll have our own expertise of what we've evaluated, what's, and we will then come in January or February to the board with recommendations. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
All right. Thanks, sir.
So my last information item, I'm going to ask Mr. St. Clair to come up and talk through an E-Rate item.
Thank you. So as part of our ongoing five-year technology refresh and growth, we are replacing wireless access points in a variety of buildings in the district and also adding new wireless network monitoring tools to help us manage the network. An RFP has been posted that is due December 17th. We are seeking federal E-Rate funds that will cover up to 80% of the costs, up to our maximum allotted E-Rate funding amount, which I'll explain momentarily. And so E-Rate filing deadlines are dictating when we need to have this voted on. We need to have this voted on by the board in the January 7th meeting, but we can't bring the bid to a close any earlier than December 17th. So we're falling right in between our meeting schedules here. So we'll be asking you to actually vote on this on January 7th. The E-Rate funding for a district is determined by total student body count that is participating in the Free and Reduced Lunch Program. And at our current participation rate, we are eligible to have 80% of our funding, of our costs covered, the remaining 20% being out of pocket. Again, subject to our maximum funding cap. And the way that works is funds for a school district are earmarked, but not guaranteed. They're just, that's our maximum that we can ask for. They're earmarked in a five-year segment, and we're entering the fifth year, final year of this round. For this round, we were allocated $2.46 million at the beginning of the cycle, and we have so far used all of it except for $274,000. And as this is the final year of the round, that now, that $274,000 is use it or lose it money. The following year, our allotment will be refreshed again, assuming there are no changes to the program. This is never a guarantee. We have a new Congress, we have a new administration, so they'll be working through that in the next year or so. Our recommendation to the board will be based on E-Rate requirements using a weighted scoring matrix. And normally, we bring something to you, and low bid is our primary focus. In the weighted scoring matrix that E-Rate uses, cost must be the highest weighted metric, but it's not the only metric. So we can also look at things such as suitability of purpose, prior experience with the vendor, if they were fully responsive to the bid and so forth. And so with the board's approval, we can actually request E-Rate approval of a response that is not the lowest bidder, but you have to have a very compelling reason to have done so, such as someone who submitted a low-ball bid but substituted a product that just won't do the job. Of course, that all is contingent upon the board's approval first. And I've totally lost my place. Yes, okay. So barring something problematic, our inclination, of course, is going to be to go with the lowest bidder so that we can maximize our use of the funds. The program does allow us some flexibility. This will all be written up and explained in what we present to you on the 7th. So the schools being upgraded are listed there, also including transportation and maintenance. And all our other facilities have already been upgraded using various funds over the last couple of years. The monitoring tools are being purchased for all facilities, and they represent a functionality we do not currently have. So I'm going to go over the funding just a little bit here. E-Rate is a little convoluted. So funded by E-Rate, we have the $274,000 available to us, and we expect to draw down all of that. The district is responsible for the remaining 20% out of pocket. So that total that will be out of pocket for that piece is $68,000. So the total piece that'll be covered by federal funding with our match will be $342,000. However, the entire project is expected to exceed that based on previous purchases that we've made of similar technology. We expect to be in the neighborhood of about $590,000. So our best estimate for our district out of pocket, combining our 20% match, the portion and the portion that we have to cover above the federal funding that we're 100% covering, we think our district out of pocket will be in the neighborhood of $315,362. This is all contingent upon market conditions and the response we receive. So the district out-of-pocket amounts would be covered by existing ITS PLOS funds that we have available, budgeted for this. So we will write all this up with the math as it actually pans out. When we get those responses presented to you on the 7th, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
My question is, are you sure that's going to be enough money, given inflation and what we're seeing in pricing everything else we have to buy?
I am. If it's over, I have budget to cover the over, but I am pretty confident on that because we bought some of this technology in the last few months. And so, I don't know. We'll see what happens in January. Not going to wait.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right. My last item for tonight is an action item, and we are going to ask for a potential revision to one of our policies be placed on the board for public review. Earlier this fall, I brought you guys a potential revision to a policy that was a single word, which I said at the time was the shortest one anyone had ever done. And then Adam Kurtz reminded me, he had one that was also a single word, so we tied. But I am bringing you tonight a much more extensive policy revision proposal. And because this will affect Barrow County families in a very direct way, I wanted to take a little time to walk you through the reasons why we are proposing this and answer any questions you have, because in addition to putting this on the table for public review, I want the board to be comfortable with why we're making this particular decision. So throughout the state, there are school districts that still only have a single elementary, single middle, single high. If you have that set up, you do not need a policy JBCCA, which is student assignment to schools. For everybody else, once you have a second elementary, middle, or high, you have to establish an attendant zone and decide where students are going to go to school, and the minute you do that, it's going to be very difficult, and you're going to have a lot of people upset wherever you draw that line. But any district that has multiple schools at a level has this policy. Almost all of them also have the policy we're bringing before you tonight, which is policy JBCD, which involves student transfers. Most of that's simple. It refers to students transferring between public school districts, private schools, et cetera. Frequently, it also involves internal transfers, where students either transfer because they move out of one zone to the other, or very frequently because a student may move out of zone but want to stay at their original school and not be disrupted. Sometimes this is required because there are multiple pieces of federal and state law that mandate that we have to allow this. For example, the MVP program, McKinney-Vento, which is for homeless students, frequently federal mandates that students be allowed for some time to remain at their school even if their temporary residence is not within zone, so they can have stability. There's something called the unsafe school choice option, which no school in Georgia has ever fallen into and had to utilize, but it is on the books, where a free transfer must be allowed between schools in the same school district. There is SB 10, which is a special education scholarship, which allows provisions for students to potentially attend a private school and get a voucher, or potentially other schools in other districts or in the same district, based on criteria. And then there's HB 251, which we'll talk about in more detail in a second. Our policy, our current policy JBCD, and if you'll pull that up, Rochelle, the current policy, not the red line one, thank you. It has a couple of features that not every district has, but we've had on the books for a while. One, and many districts do have this, it has a permissive transfer policy, which allows a parent to petition the superintendent for their child to be allowed to attend out of zone so long as they provide transportation. That is currently listed, given to the superintendent or their designee, and it does not allow for an appeal process. Basically, the parent appeals to the superintendent, superintendent renders a decision, and that's final one way or the other. Our policy currently also allows for special circumstances with a student who may have an IEP or a disability. It allows for the use, in the case of a student who may be disabled but does not have an IEP, it allows for a special committee to pull together to review the circumstance, make a recommendation to the superintendent, who can then render a decision one way or the other. That's the current features of our policy that are not universal in this particular policy statewide. Currently in Barrow County, I thought you might like to know the numbers, about 5% to 6%, depending on the day of our students that are enrolled, are attending out of zone. Overwhelming, that's 874 students as of this morning. Overwhelmingly, the largest number of those, 419, are employee-placed. Those are students where you have a teacher at Bramwood Elementary, they may not live in the Bramlett Zone, but it's convenient for their kids to attend, so we allow them to attend a school close by or to opt into that. Almost every district has that exact same provision in there. We have about 264 students, or precisely 264 students, that are placed by an IEP, meaning that they are a part of a specific program, say, an autism program that is not offered at every school. So those students are placed at a school where that program exists. Those are the only students for transfers of these kind we provide transportation for, typically. We have quite a few MVP students, and we have, in this case, currently 66 students who are there, who are placed at their current school out of zone on a superintendent-level approval, which means the superintendent or their designee reviewed the case and allowed them to stay at that school. So that's been our policy for quite a while. There are some challenges with it. One of them is there's an equity problem, which is you're asked, parents provide a hardship, they provide reasons, but you are still reliant on a single person at the district office level to read through the emails, talk to the parents, and render a decision and say, I think this particular case is worthy and this particular case is not. Even if that person has the wisdom of Solomon, you are bringing in problems with bias, you're bringing in problems with, are you having one of those days when you get that request? We try to be as fair as we can be, but at the end of the day, we want to make sure we're treating all of our families the same, and any kind of policy like that, even though we love judgment discretion, opens us up to the issue of, is that the right decision? And I can tell you, having been the person who does this, a lot of parents have a lot of compelling cases, and we can't always verify every aspect of what they're bringing to us. It's not a streamlined process. We receive about 200 or so of these requests over a given year, and they come in at all times of the year. They're typically circumstances where the parents had to move on a short-term notice. We have to render a decision fairly quickly, or else the student gets bounced back and forth between schools. So it creates a management issue as we go forward. The special committee is a little bit redundant, because in this particular case, if they have an IEP, the IEP team has to make that decision. If you have a student that has mental health issues severe enough to where that kind of a move is problematic, that really ought to be a student receiving at least a Section 504 plan, and the Section 504 plan can already make that decision, so it's unclear why you would have a student who has enough significant issues that they require a special committee when the typical things we would use to serve those students already allow for that to happen. It makes planning allotment and planning for subsequent years very difficult, because we try to make decisions on projected numbers, roll-up numbers of students, and then you have parents that do this, and suddenly you have more students in a classroom than the maximum class size would allow. And with some small exceptions, the safety protocols, services, curricula, course offerings are virtually identical across our schools. It's not as if, with some exceptions, things are being offered at one school that are not offered at another. And frequently, what we see is these are more issues between the parent and the school, whatever those may be, and we think it's healthier to work on those issues and try to reestablish the relationship rather than just allow them to transfer. So here's the proposed change. Rochelle, if you'll pull up the proposed revision to J-
JBCD.
So what we would do here is we're going to strike most of the language that's just sort of basically saying we're going to follow federal laws that we've already stead in the first paragraph, that we will follow all federal and state laws. And what this allows us to do is if the state or the federal government passes a new law related to this, we don't have to come back and do a revision. We just say, we're going to follow all laws that relate to this, and then we don't have to spell them out as explicitly. We also remove almost all the language related to employee placement, internal transfers, things like that, and we're going to put those in a regulation. That allows us to be a little more flexible in terms of if we have to make tweaks to this process based on the growth that we're anticipating. And then we're adding some more detail, some of the withdrawal procedures. There's some language that we think will be helpful for some circumstances that come up periodically that are, you know, we want to add that in. And this has all been reviewed by the GSBA, and they signed off on this, so we're comfortable this all holds up legally. We don't typically bring regulations before you, but we do tonight, because this doesn't require approval, but we want you to see how we envision this working going forward. So Rochelle is pulling that up. What this does is it, the regulation would outline all the various federal and state laws that we would be following through this. It takes the same employee language for employee placement, puts it in a regulation, didn't change anything with that. It specifies something that every time we place a student in a, say, an autism classroom, say, we place a student in an autism classroom, they often have siblings, and the parent would like the siblings to attend the same school the other child attends. Currently, they have to appeal to the superintendent. We almost always grant these. We've almost never turned this down unless there's major behavior issues or something like that with the non-IEP student. So what we would do is right into the regulation, we're going to automatically approve those. So if a student is placed by an IEP, if the parent is willing to provide the transportation for their siblings, their siblings can attend that school so long as that student is still IEP-placed at the school. We're already doing that, we're just codifying the language a little bit. We also, we have always had a practice that because we don't want to disrupt students midsemester, so let's say you have a student who is, it's March of the school year, and they moved to a different school in the county, it's awfully hard to ask a student to start over in the teacher, frankly, for the last two months of the school year, so we've given our principals some discretion to say, you can remain for the remainder of this school year so long as you provide transportation, but we've never really put that in writing. So we went ahead and put that down, and essentially what it says is, the principal can authorize a student, once they've completed the midpoint of the semester, they can finish out the remainder of that semester, so long as the parent provides transportation, but then the subsequent academic semester, they would need to attend their zone school. We also put in a provision for seniors, students that have senior credits, if they start the year with senior credits and they can provide transportation, we would let them complete the year and graduate with the class they've been with for three years, but that's only for seniors. Everyone else could finish their semester, but then they would need to move to where they're actually zoned. Then we've outlined procedures for permissive school choice. HB 251, every school system in Georgia, and this has been on the books for 15 years, is required to, at a certain point in the year, by, I think it's July 1, they're required to say, at these schools and grade levels, we have space. And if you would like your child to go to this school where there is space, and you provide transportation, you can go there so long as we have slots open. So if you have five slots open and six parent supply, you have to do a lottery, but ultimately, we don't usually have that issue. So what we would do is in March, I'm sorry, I said March, in April of every year, we would open up a window of about two to three weeks where any parent can apply for a permissive transfer to a school that has room, based on the roll-up of students, the allotments of staff, and projections based on growth. If we have space, anyone can apply, anyone can go there. But outside of that window, we simply would not be doing permissive transfers unless they're one of those IEP 504-based circumstances, students would attend where they are zoned to attend, and we would work on issues that parents may have with the teacher or the principal or whatever those things are. But it gets us out of the business of being the arbiter of, you deserve to go to this school, but you don't, which is problematic. We would, students, if they're granted access during this permissive timeframe, would be able to exhaust their eligibility, meaning they could continue on. So if we allow them to transfer in second grade, they would automatically approve to finish out, but once they finish their fifth-grade year, they would be then required to either apply for the middle school of their choice, or they could go to the one that they live in and are zoned for. So it's not like you're automatically on that track, it's just so long as you're at that school. We anticipate this would be in April of each year, with multiple weeks of open and much communication and forums and all that, but it's, which will be a bear, but it streamlines a bear of 200 requests across a calendar year in two, three weeks, which is much more manageable. The other thing is, as I mentioned, we have 66 students that are currently on a permissive transfer. We would absolutely honor those, even if we change this policy. Now, most of those are year-to-year anyway, so they're only granted for a year, but anyone that has superintendent's permission, if we've said you can stay for two, three years, we will honor that commitment. We will grandfather them in and not change those. So the key takeaways of this, we think this reduces subjectivity in this decision-making. We think this makes it a much more streamlined process to manage. We think this increases the emphasis on trying to work with families to problem-solve when there are issues between the school and the family, so it's not just, I want to go to a different school. We still would have protections for both federal and state cases where it meets certain laws, as well as special education and 504 students would have the ability to review whether or not that's their least restrictive environment. And we think it helps us with long-term planning, because as the board well knows, we have a lot of growth coming, even though we've hit a bit of a pause this year, and we're simply not going to be in a position where we can have a lot of transferring around when we're at capacity or overcapacity at almost every one of our buildings. So that's what we're proposing. I will be happy to field any questions you have.
Let's go back to the IEP students.
Yes, ma'am.
And having their siblings attend the same school. What happens if that school is already overcrowded?
That's a factor we could look at. I think the general, I think if, let me see if I can find the language on that. We may have to put something in there about contingent on space, but generally speaking, we have been able to accommodate that fairly well. I don't recall a circumstance where it was so overcrowded we could not accommodate one, but I'm sure that's happened before. We can add some discretion in there, if that's the board's pleasure. Generally speaking, we've been able to manage that, though, and it is certainly something that benefits parents, because it prevents them from, in order to meet my child's needs at this school that has specialized services, I now have to deal with two different elementary schools, two different pickup lines. It's a good thing for parents. We can almost always work it out, but if we want a little bit of hedge language, that's something we can look at.
Well, I totally agree with you. We want to work that out.
Yep.
Okay, I'm just thinking forward to projected growth and where we're going to be and how many more pods we have to have than that sort of thing.
Any pods.
So you, I'm just suggesting that if you wanted to look at that, you could add the language in case it comes into play two or three years from now.
That's great feedback, thank you.
And remind me, which elementary schools currently have more specialized programs? Like-
I'm going to turn to my friend Amy Wadley, if you answer that question.
Elementary school? I said, which elementary schools already, like, have the more specialized to where they would need the transfer?
Winder Elementary.
Oh, Winder, sorry.
But they all have at least two, but more than elementary.
Okay.
They have the most.
Right.
And those change, by the way, that's not a permanent thing. They do sometimes move those.
Because some of your, like, could move, okay. But that makes sense, if it has to do with more space too, to be able, that might be why it hasn't been an issue.
Any other questions I can answer?
My other question was, what about the teachers that have their kids at the schools? They want, are we still going to allow that?
Oh, yeah, that's, all we did was move that to regulation, which makes it a little easier to tweak if we needed to, based on growth, but we don't have any anticipations of doing that, like, you know, helping our staff out by allowing their kids to be at their school or at the closest school feasible to them is a huge boon to them. It helps us with retention. It's a pretty critical issue, so we have no intentions of really revisiting that. We're simply moving the language a little bit. It's not changing. It's, nothing about that will change.
That's what I want to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have one other question. How easy are the regulations to find for the average parent in our information?
Probably pretty difficult, which is why if this is approved, my plan would be to have Ms. Valles and the communication team build a very parent-friendly part of the website that we can refer them to, that will walk them through how all of this works, when the window is, try to make the form as simple as possible. Like, I wouldn't expect a parent to be able to go into Asimly and find that regulation.
Right.
I just wanted y'all to see the regulation, because if we're devolving a lot of the language in the, in the actual policy, I wanted you to see what we were thinking of doing. We would make a very parent-friendly portion of the website to help parents understand all these issues.
That is a great answer.
To that end, Dr. Thompson, I've always been told that most folks don't mind change as long as they don't have to.
Yes, sir.
That being said, I don't think you can over-communicate this to all our stakeholders, our employees, and parents, just everyone. I don't think you could let them know enough about what's going on.
No, I agree completely, and that is something-
I have nothing, I don't see anything wrong with that.
Once we make the change, assuming that is approved by the board, that would be something that we would take great pains to communicate to all of our families, both when the change is made, but also particularly as we ramp up towards the first window where we, and we do this every year anyway, the HB 251, it would simply be, this is your chance to actually apply for a permissive transfer, and there's not another option, so we want to make sure parents understand that and don't miss that opportunity because we missed them, essentially. We want to make sure they know when it is, they can get their, their application for that in and not find out about it later, and like, well, I thought I could request that from the superintendent at any time. We'll make sure that's heavily communicated.
Well, and I think what I like about it is, because I get a lot of phone calls from my constituents, and I think it would be fair and equitable, because a lot of things that I hear is they know somebody that they got approved.
Yep, correct.
And their situation is very similar, but they didn't get approved. And I know, as fast as Barrow County's growing, that's only going to triple, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
Those issues. So what, you have 200 now, in a couple of years, we could have 600.
Yes, ma'am.
And our phone calls are going to increase, not to mention y'all's job's going to-
Yep.
And I think it just makes it more fair for the public as a whole.
Correct.
And I know I do have constituents that have kids with autistic, some are served at Kennedy because of the situation you said, but some, they have several autistic, or, you know, kids, special needs kids, and they may have some at Auburn also.
Absolutely.
So I think this is a good situation.
And, you know, going back to the equity issue of making a decision, this family gets approval, this one doesn't, the board policy currently does not allow for an appeal The board policy currently does not allow for an appeal beyond the superintendent's decision, which leaves a lot of parents, if they feel like that decision was not made in the right way, it doesn't give them an outlet for that. Whereas this is much more equitable in terms of, it's just as simple as if there's space, you can go to the school that you want. There's not, it's not available to you. But here are all the things related to special education, section 504 eligibility, where if you truly have a disabling need, there's already existing practices, policies, and procedures that would help you with that.
I have one thing.
Yes.
And you probably hit on it, and I'm just a little too ADD to follow completely. But going back to the, previously, it's been one person saying yes or no, and the judgment discretion and the burden there. Totally understand and approve of this policy change. But how will that, I know we are opening it up for a few weeks for these applications to come in in April, but who would be comprised of the decision-makers? Will it be, how many people would be in on that?
There's really not a decision to make. You, well, there is in the sense that like, you have to have a process by which you define what is below capacity. And there's a lot of different ways to do that, and I'm not going to sit here and say we have that exactly. We outline in the procedures the things we would look at, including current enrollment, roll-up enrollment, allotment of teachers currently at the school, and growth projections. We'll come up with a methodology, and we'll probably try to explain that in that website we're building for families about how we determine that. But we would, in HB 251, what we say is, Bear Creek Middle School at sixth grade has excess capacity. If you're interested in your sixth grader going to Bear Creek, you fill this out. If there are five slots available and seven families apply for it, you just do a straightforward lottery for who gets those five spots. Whereas if it's three apply for five slots, they all three get in. So the only subjectivity that comes in is in trying to build a methodology for what constitutes space. And in talking to other districts, they all do it slightly differently. Some don't even do it at the grade level, they do it at the overall school level, list capacity versus how many students. Some do it at the grade level. We will work hard to find a defensible way to both do that and explain that to parents as well.
All righty, are you guys good to add this to the consent agenda to be put on the table for 30 days?
Yes.
All righty, thank you so much. All right, before we go into executive session, due to scheduling conflicts, Mr. Bailey will not be able to be with us the first weekend in December for his final board meeting. Mr. Bailey, how many years have you been on the Board of Education in Barrow County?
This will be my 24th.
24 years. And so I just thought it would be great if we could all just kind of congratulate him and thank him for his service for 24 amazing years, supporting our school system, our students, our families, our community.
Thank you. Before we go into executive session, I probably won't say this well. And there's some people here I would like to thank that aren't here, and I just hope they get the message. I've, I've enjoyed most of my time on the school board. We've had some, we've had some challenges over the years, and I've worked with a lot of amazing people on the board, some that aren't with us anymore. I am a fan of public education, I always will be. And for all of you who have been such an important part in my life, thank you doesn't seem like enough, but that's all I got. So thank you.
We sure do appreciate you. All right, at this time, we're going to go into executive session to discuss, deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or interview applicants for the super, position of superintendent.
Yes.
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 All righty, we'll be back in a few minutes.
Scott, this is a gift from Dr. Chris McMichael. He is excited to recognize you as October Community Member of the Month. Ms. Pugh nominated you, and we are thrilled that you will let us celebrate some of the great things you do in this community.
So I guess y'all know, my name is Captain Dakin. I actually enjoy the interactions with the kids. I pick on them, they pick on me, and it's a lot of fun. But I love the way they ask questions. I've had some really good questions on, out of these students. And I enjoy, I think I make a difference in trying to help them to realize that there's lots of opportunities out there. I encourage them to work hard to get to where they want to be.
He's been, I guess, speaker in our classes for around 17 years, we believe.
Yeah.
And he was such an impact, had such an impact on students that they kept asking for him to come back. And so he actually comes and speaks on different topics for all four levels of our classes. I had two former students, and their house caught on fire several years ago, and they said that they remembered what to do based on him being in our classrooms.
It was 29, a little over 29 years ago. I was setting up a polling booth at the Auburn Fire Station, and one of the guys said, "Why don't you come down Tuesday night and see what it's like?" And ever since then, I've been a firefighter. And that led me into EMS, and eventually I gave up a position that I had managing a corporation to become a full-time firefighter. Well, we, we are finally at the point in this world where we're talking about mental health inside of public safety. I actually teach courses, I teach them around, actually, all over the world now. But stress management is key in being able to, I push it because I have been diagnosed with PTSD. I push the stress management stuff very hard on my folks. And one of the things I tell them is, it's not a, just when it happens, you've got to be open to talk all the time. You create that culture. And you create, we have created a culture inside of the, Barrow County is so far ahead of the game on that, that we've created a culture where you get to talk mental health. We can recommend you to a counselor if you need it, and there's no shame in that. Because what we see, what we do, and just life in general, sometimes you just need a little help.
Hello, my name is Brittany.
My name is Amber Bautista.
Gail Garcia.
Natalia Tronco.
Ricardo Rubio Rivera.
My name is Snowy.
Tabita Mitrik.
Marco.
My name is Rosa.
Karen Garcia.
Miss Deara.
Juan Martin.
Jesus Alenales Moñas.
Dale Chislem.
Lizeth.
I am Jesus.
Jennifer Jimenez.
Fernando.
Juan Esteban.
Satisav.
Charin Sa.
I'm Steve Galindo, I'm from El Salvador.
The Barrow County Newcomer Academy was established in 2017 with the purpose of supporting high school students as they transition to life in the United States. Since its inception, the Newcomer Academy has served students coming from all over the world with many different language backgrounds. Instructors work closely with students to develop their English proficiency and provide support in their academic classes. Additionally, the Newcomer Academy serves to support students with the many unique challenges of adapting to life in a new culture surrounded by a new language. This means everything from previewing each day's lunch menu and discussing the foods being served, to assisting students in researching and planning for future careers.
We accept students from all over the world and become a close-knit family, so their cultures automatically come in with them in organic and inorganic ways.
We can put aside the fitting in, because they find a commonality in their differences that they're not going to find in the larger high school.
Getting to know our students and their backgrounds and sharing with each other, that's kind of like the foundation where we go from, and everything is based on that.
Newcomer has been so great in providing that community and those people that they feel comfortable talking to, asking questions, to show them the ropes and what, just how to navigate the day.
And they also work with them on some of their academic deficits. And so when they come back to me in the classroom, I see improvement from them that they got from the Newcomer Academy.
When newcomers arrive in the U.S., they are often overwhelmed and apprehensive about their new surroundings. They are in desperate need of a safe space to adjust and an advocate they can rely on. The Newcomer Academy is honored to play this role in students' lives until they feel confident and prepared to move on independently. Even after transitioning out of the program, instructors maintain communication with students, families, and colleagues, allowing for a gradual release into the mainstream classes.
First, I didn't want to go to school, because I was like, oh, they're going to speak another language, and I don't know how to speak it.
Leaving friends, leaving family, leaving your background, and moving to a new place, it is hard.
Sometimes it's hard, because I, when I speak, when, when I try to speak English, it's difficult for me.
When I saw that there was like, a lot of people like in my situation, it kind of made it, made me feel like I was not alone.
They help people from other countries, and they make them feel like part of, of the U.S. They make, they make them feel like home.
Newcomer students typically stay in the program for one academic year, depending on their specific needs. During their time in the Newcomer Academy, students are supported and cared for by our passionate newcomer team, who welcome and respect the diverse cultures represented. The Newcomer Academy instructors work closely with students and families to address specific needs, monitor student progress, and connect families to community resources to help each and every student thrive.
The most important goal of the Newcomer Academy is to make our students feel safe, comfortable, and accepted. We want our students to have a place and a face that is familiar, where they know that their needs will be met and that someone will advocate for them.
We really become a family, and they have each other to support, to offer the support, and they have us. It takes some work to get through, but that is our daily goal.
I care about these students, and I want them to be successful. So it makes me really proud when they come back to the Newcomer Academy, and I can tell that they've been working on certain communication skills or academic skills. And they just, I see them grow so much throughout the course of the year, and it just makes me really proud of them. Allowing them to know that they have our support and our help in any way that they need us is the most powerful thing that we can offer.
The teachers are really able to get to know their students, to wrap their arms around them as newcomers, while also teaching them important academic skills and helping them to acquire the language. It's a remarkable program, and it's very important to the Barrow County community.
The students and teachers at the Newcomer Academy are a close-knit community of people who support one another and value cultural inclusion. Students learn and grow alongside their peers, who are also experiencing similar challenges of adjusting to new culture and language. The Newcomer Academy instructors employ culturally responsive teaching and work hard to ensure equity of opportunities for newcomer students.
It's a very good program for the people to arrive to the United States.
They make feel better and comfortable.
The academy is maybe the best thing for people like me.
It makes me feel like I'm not the only one that is trying to learn other language and, and starting a new life.
Ms. Wilson and Ms. Fry were the best teachers that I had in my life, like really, they're so nice.
When you need help in, in your class, they help you.
It has been a great help for me and to improve my English.
The teachers can explain what we know, understand.
Our teachers care about us in school and out.
I really like the support you give me and give us and my classmates.
Helps a lot, and it's a good program.
Each day you're going to be there, it's going to be better.
During the 2020-2021 school year, the Newcomer Academy expanded to serve elementary and middle school newcomers through virtual learning environments. The next few years will continue to show growth as the program expands to reach and serve newcomers of all ages. Working with newcomers is challenging and rewarding work. The Newcomer Academy is proud to continue the tradition of being Barrow Bold.
I can't imagine these students without this program. I think that in and of itself shows how valuable the program is.
I hope the program grows to meet the needs of our students and our growing ESOL population. I hope we're able to add instructors and serve students from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade.
I think that that was probably one of the best years of my life when I was in Newcomers.
Newcomer Academy is the best academy in the world.
I love Newcomer Academy.
For more information about the Newcomer Academy, visit our website or follow us on social media.
I'm Paul Thornton, I teach music technology, guitar and piano at Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy. So music technology is basically music production, recording studio things. We do anything from composing music electronically, live recording, recording in the studio. So in this lab, we have 24 stations. Each station is equipped with a computer, a MIDI controller, where they can do their editing and composing in this lab. Currently, the lab is used for piano and guitar. I don't teach music technology in the spring, but in the fall I did. And then here, we've got our recording studio. We're getting a new building here at Bassa, so in that building, I'll have a full, proper recording studio. We have created a recording studio here in the Sims Academy. So I've got the studio here that's set up for podcasting. We have a few student groups that are doing some podcasting, so they do that in here. But this is also where my music technology does singing, guitar playing, drums, full band things. And then here's our control room right here, which is where the students, you know, listen to it, record, make adjustments and things like that. And then afterwards, they'll go back and edit those for a final product. Planning is typically on the weekends for me. If we're talking specifics, I would say Sunday afternoon and Sunday night is when I am just doing research for whatever I want to present to them that week. This semester, I teach guitar class and piano class, so we're studying different guitar players, famous guitarists. Same thing with piano. Right now, we're going through historical time periods with piano. So there's a lot of research on my part that's being done, and then how I'm going to present that to the students. I think you have to be patient, and that's something that I think every teacher will tell you. When you come to work, you, you can't necessarily control what's going to happen that day. There's a lot of variables with students, and they're all coming from different backgrounds. And I think you have to be patient with them and take them wherever they are. And then the other thing I think you need as a teacher is, is the ability to forgive yourself, because we make mistakes as well, and sometimes, you know, your mistakes may affect your students or your coworkers. You have to move past that, because nobody's perfect. We're listeners, and the biggest thing is we're here to facilitate. We don't control what they do. We just help them kind of discover who they are and what they want to be later on in life. And if we can do that, then I think we've done our job.
My name is Lance McNamara. I'm the Health Service Manager, Athletic Trainer for Barrow County School System. We're at Wynderborough High School practice today, covering football. And, and one of the things that we're always concerned about this time of the year is looking at heat illnesses, environments, things of that nature. So today, we want to discuss a little bit about what the athletic trainers do at Appalachia High School, at Bassa, as well as Wynderborough High School. Athletic trainers play a key role in the safety of the student athlete. We're involved in injury prevention, injury recognition, rehabilitation, counseling. But probably one of the key things is looking at environmental conditions. This unit here is called a Wet Bulb Globe Temperature Unit. Many years ago, we would kind of focus on what's called the heat index. Heat index is great. It focuses on heat, the dry temperature, as well as humidity. Wet bulb has been used by the United States military, primarily the Marine Corps, and they use three components, the radiance of the sun, the humidity that we have, as well as a dry temperature. That gives a mathematical computation, and then that point gives a number. And that number determines what modifications that we utilize for practice. So that number could be a green flag, a yellow flag, an orange flag, red flag, and a black flag. A black flag. When this, when this device gets to 92%, we have what's called a black flag, which means there's no physical activity whatsoever. When the number gets below 92, we get to 90 to 92, we're in what's called a red flag. That red flag is based upon time. We do not allow athletes to participate in the weather for more than 60 minutes. They have no equipment on whatsoever. But within that 60 minutes of activity, they're really only performing 40. They do 20 minutes of, of water rest breaks embedded. We get to orange. Orange is from 89 down to 86. Orange means that we just have to watch the at-risk individuals. We be sure that we have at least four water breaks per hour within a two-hour practice. We get down to yellow, which is below our 86, and that's discretionary. We just kind of have to make sure our kids are, have access to water. We give them plenty of water breaks, and we kind of watch the at-risk. Anything below 82 is called green, which, we don't have many issues from that. However, when we get to the score of 88, we also have to set up what's called a cool zone. So over here, a cool zone is that we happen to have a shade of tent. We have a water immersion tank that we can drop 30 gallons of ice water into a tank, about 58 degrees. We then place the individual into that tub, and we reduce our core temperature quite effectively. So hopefully, we never have to get to that, because we are monitoring. We have unlimited water breaks for the student athlete, and because of our athletic trainers and our coaches, we focus on the students. In conclusion, Barrow County Schools is committed to student safety, not just in the classroom, but also in the athletic environment. We have athletic trainers, that is their responsibility to work with our coaches to be able to identify potential injuries, whether it be through just competition, play, or the environment. So again, we've got some very good policies and procedures. So, again, we've got some very good policies and procedures set in place to protect the student athlete. Thank you again, and remember, go dogs, go Wildcats, go Blazers.
I would describe Kelly and Ben as, as family.
Ben and Kelly, we are so excited to recognize both of you as our February Community Members of the Month. We appreciate everything you pour into our community and our schools, and this is just a small token to say thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Our absolute pleasure.
Truly. I know Ben and Kelly McDaniel through a number of interactions I've had with them over the past five to six years in Barrow County. Ben McDaniel and I were in the same leadership Barrow class, the class of 2019, and I have gotten to know Kelly through different opportunities through the school system, like the Barrow Leadership Partnership.
Kelly has been kind of the boots-on-the-ground person with our parent education workshops. She's fantastic, of course, with children, she's a children's librarian, and she works with the parents, she's always getting a lot of compliments from them.
For me, it's an honor to be recognized with my wife, because even before I was at Family Connection, when I worked back in Parks and Recreation out of college, like we've both been public servants for a very long time, and it's, it's so cool to go back to it again, that the kid that went to Auburn Elementary, Holson Beck Elementary, Bethlehem Elementary, I know I'm missing some, Wynderborough Middle School as well, that same kid to be able to come back 20, 30 years later, just be a contributing member, like it's the best feeling in the world for me.
Yeah, I feel honored. I mean, it's, we've worked so closely with the school system through my work for years now, I mean, seven, eight years, I've been with my role for eight years, so all eight years, we've worked hand-in-hand with Barrow County, and it, yeah, I just feel honored. I feel like we're leaving a legacy of something for our kids to be proud of, and, you know, it is nice to be honored with Ben, because Ben is the very front-facing half of our couple, and I am very frequently behind the scenes, and, you know, I'm working hard kind of to help push other people forward, but it's really nice to be here.
I trust them so much, there are so many people in the world that, that will tell you one thing and go behind your back and say something else, but with Kelly and Ben, I know that what they say to me, they're saying to anybody else. They're just always so positive, I guess maybe that's one good word too for them, would be positive. They have an incredibly positive impact on the whole Barrow community.
I love the fact that I moved back to Wynder, that I'm able to be a contributing member of the Barrow County Society, and being able to kind of punch in when needed to be able to make things better, whether through its coaching, or serving as a mentor, or connecting resources, or helping develop the workforce of tomorrow through Sims Academy and Linear Tech. Like, that's what it's all about for me, is making sure, not necessarily for my kids, but my kids' kids have a better future in Barrow County.
Ben is known for being a community builder. He does that through formal programs, but he also does it informally. He organizes coffee on Tuesday mornings, where everyone is welcome to come and build relationships, and get to know each other, and just be together. Kelly does the same thing, whether she is involved in the Holson Beck School Governance Team, or another organization, she is bringing people together and building relationships and having a positive impact. Barrow County is where we've chosen to live. We don't just work here, we live here. All of our children attend the school system here. The school system has poured so much into our children, it's been, it actually makes me really emotional, I try not to cry when I talk about it, but it's really emotional seeing how much the school has done for our children through COVID, through the crazy fire that Holson Beck had to deal with last year. We have seen nothing but caring professionals pouring into our children nonstop, and so anytime we're able to give back in any kind of way to help support the school system, like we're there, whatever you need. And, you know, and it's not just our kids. We chose Barrow County because we love the area, we wanted our children to have, you know, diverse experiences where they got to meet lots of different kinds of people, and Barrow County provides that for us, and we want to make sure, you know, a rising tide lifts all boats, I guess, so we want to make it better for everybody.
I feel like if you're involved in your school, your kids are in good shape, it's just going to work out, and it has.
Both Ben and Kelly, they care about this community, they care about our school system, and they truly care about our future.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Dawson, and I'm a senior here at the Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy. I came here to Bassa not knowing that there was a robotics program in the first place, but I came here to Bassa because it was the new big school on the block. I remember, in middle school, they came to us at Westside and said, "There is a new high school coming up, and we're building it right now, and you can enroll." Of course, I'm going to take that opportunity, this is a brand-new school with materials that are top-of-the-line, highest-tech, brand-new. And I just took the opportunity, I saw a good opportunity, I took it, and it was the Barrow Arts and Sciences Academy. How could I not accept something like that if I'm going into the computer science field? In high school, this is going to sound really bad, but in high school, the most memorable experiences I have are the worst experiences I have. But I think that's because after I found the solution, it gave me the most sense of accomplishment, the most sense of pride, because I finally found out the error that was causing everything. It was usually, I typed something wrong, or I put in the wrong variable, and when I finally just saw that little mistake and fixed it, everything started working, everything was fluent, everything started going along like it was lively, and I was so happy to see this thing I was working on for the past like month, two weeks, day even, start working again. And I was always so happy if I had to pick someone from everyone I've ever met, it has to be Ms. Knowles. Ms. Knowles has been my computer science teacher for the longest time. I've had her through APCSP, game design, APCSA, and even now, in work-based learning, I go to her and ask her questions, and she still knows the answers to all of them. Ms. Knowles is a very, very good teacher. She'll always just like stand up, walk around, help people with problems. She'll never say something like, "Just look it up on Google," she'll go to it, see the problem, say, "How can we work through this together?" My future plans right now for graduation are kind of iffy. I'd say, right now, I've been accepted into UGA. I've also been given the honor of getting an internship at Lockheed Martin. My parents want me to go to college, so I will. And the short and sweet of it, I'm going to college because my parents asked me to, and I love my parents. My biggest dream right now is if I get out of college, get an internship, get a job, in my free time, start making a video game, which I'm very proud of. I've had this idea in my head for years for this video game. It's just generally, I need this experience on how to program, how to draw, how to make music, do all these things, how to make a video game in general, what's the process? I'm trying to get as much experience as I can right now, and through work-based learning, through people, through talking to other people in general, just learn how to make things, make a video game. I've a lot of small, tiny accomplishments that I'm very proud of, things I can't even remember, but I know happened, that I'm always happy about, but if I had to name something, it'd be what I'm doing right now. Working on the Mono Project, which is a website, I started from scratch when I didn't even know how to make a website, how to know how to make an interactable interface with a website, all this and that, and communicate with an SQL, a database, that actually stores all this information. When I started my work-based learning semester, like last semester, I had absolutely no clue what I was doing, what I was willing to learn, and I learned from every possible source I could. It's really taught me a lot about cybersecurity, how to build a website, how to maintain a website, what the process is to build and create and maintain all this and that for a simple website. I think the biggest accomplishment right now I've had in high school is the connections I've made along this whole path, through not only engineering software, but through with people too. I know how to communicate better, I know how to build, I know how to engineer, I know what it feels like to be working a part of a team, and I think that's the biggest thing you can learn from anything, how to communicate, how to work, how to work as a team. And I think that's the biggest accomplishment anyone can get. Try your best, always be willing to learn, and most importantly, never give up what you're doing. Always follow that dream, always follow the goal that you have, and never, ever let anyone tell you otherwise. Always follow the dream.
We are so excited to welcome you to Appalachia High School. Get involved in extracurricular activities to make your high school experience more meaningful, and find the group of friends that you will keep forever. One of the graduation requirements of Barrow County is that all students complete a pathway.
All righty, guys, welcome back. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Salute. Second.
Mr. Bailey, Ms. Stevens, all in favor? All right, motion passes. And then next, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the purchase of two maintenance vans from Atkins Ford.
Salute.
Stevens, Ms. Malu, all in favor? All righty, motion passes. You guys will notice our next meeting date is December 3rd for our last regular board meeting of the year at 6:00 PM. There's nothing else to discuss, I hope you guys all have a fantastic, restful Thanksgiving break, we appreciate it, and we'll see you in December.